We'll begin the business of the City Council here today. First, with a meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board. When that meeting is completed, then we'll enter into a formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council. A quorum is present, so let's call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the role of the Assistant Housing Governing Board?
Board Member DeCecio. Board Member Lopez.
Here.
Board Member Noakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Stark.
Here.
Board Member Valenzuela.
Here.
Board Member Waring.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Gallego.
Here.
Chairman Stanton.
Here.
Our first item is item number three. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from June 22, 2016?
So moved. Second.
Approve minutes.
That's right. We have a motion and a second, and Board Member Lopez also indicates his support. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number four is next. A proposed resolution authorizing our city manager to apply for and accept funding from HUD for up to 150 project-based Veterans Administrative Support Housing vouchers. Member Lopez, do you have a motion?
Let's move the approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any comments or questions from members of this council? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. This meeting of the Assistant Housing Governing Board is now adjourned. Member Lopez, thank you for your service. Good to see you as always.
Very much. Thank you for having me.
Now we'll call the meeting to order of the formal City Council meeting for August 31, 2016. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
Here.
Judy Home is our interpreter here today. Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Judy. Soy interprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much. With the City Clerk, please read the 24-hour paragraph. Before the 24-hour paragraph, according to our City Council rules, we're going to hear citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to provide comments on any subject matter before this City Council. These are non-agendized items, so therefore, the City Council cannot respond in a substantive way to the issues raised by citizens. Our first speaker for citizen comment is Mr. Leonard Clark. Mr. Clark, are you here? You have up to three minutes, followed by Dominic McCutcheon. Mr. Clark.
Hi there. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a member of the -- resident of the City of Phoenix, and I heard about recently about the City of Phoenix wanting to cover, I think it's approximately 20% to 25% of the city with trees. And whether you believe in global warming, which I do, or you don't, either way, it makes good sense because, one, we're helping to lower the amount of the pollution that's causing our global warming in our air, and, two, even if you don't subscribe to it, if you're one of my conservative friends who doesn't believe all the science, then at least you know more people want to move here, because more and more people are starting -- the word's getting out that Phoenix is getting hotter and hotter and hotter. And I was just jogging today in one of our beautiful parks up in District One, and every time I could go into the shade, I could continue running. So, the thing is, if we could build enough trees and then all work together as a city to keep the shade in the summertime, when people could go out and exercise and not just have to go inside to the rec center, that'd be great. And then finally, tonight, there's going to be a presidential candidate in Phoenix speaking, but I just want, I believe, the world to know, as the media is here, that Phoenix represents America. It doesn't represent a walk on the tarmac by a former president to influence our Attorney General of the United States to say that justice is only for a few. And also, Phoenix does not have any wall that will ever be high enough that will keep the ideals of liberty and freedom like the rest of America has out of it. And I really appreciate your letting me speak, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Dominic McCutcheon is next. You have up to three minutes to speak before this council, followed by James Dibler.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm one of thousands of employees who parks at the Skytrain parking lot where, for good reason, employees fear for their safety. For the past year and a half, I've been working with the city to try to make the area safe. I spoke recently with the new parking lot superintendent who was misinformed of the crimes in or around the Skytrain. I figured if he is misinformed, then maybe some of you are misinformed. You might know, thanks to the media, that there was recently a double stabbing within 1,000 feet of the Skytrain. What you might not know is that there have also been a number of other crimes, either within that same 1,000-foot radius or at the Skytrain address. Some of these crimes include sexual offense, other instances of aggravated assault, which was a stabbing at 4,200 East Washington, July 29th, theft, burglary, criminal damage, vandalism, trespassing, and a death investigation at the Skytrain facility, although I'm not sure if death itself is a crime. I'm in receipt of a number of firsthand accounts from employees who were subjected to crime, harassed, threatened, or frightened in the parking lot or facility. City Manager Zirker suggested that I park somewhere else if I feel so unsafe. Yet, what of my fellow employees? Aviation Director Bennett says there are not enough outlying parking places for all employees to park, which means that some employees would still have to park at the unsafe Skytrain facility. I believe the city has boasted of the success of Skytrain and Light Rail, perhaps due in large part to an increase in overall ridership. What I think the city failed to delineate is that employees are factored into the Skytrain -- into the increase in the Skytrain ridership. I urge you to provide footed police or security personnel at the facility at least during hours of darkness. After all, safety is a part of the aviation department's own mission statement. Also, I think you have the money, and it will telegraph a strong signal to any bad guys. It will make the employees feel safe. Security will provide employees a reliable go-to source to report either suspicious activity or to ask for help. Lastly, footed personnel will be the eyes and ears of the area. The current practice of using security cars to patrol the area is inadequate and unreliable. The cars patrol at random with windows up, and the drivers cannot see or hear as well as someone on foot. Bloom Marijuana Dispensary shares the same physical street and environment with Skytrain, yet only the dispensary has its own footed security. Show your citizens that the City of Phoenix cares for the safety and security of its customers just as much as a marijuana dispensary. If you're going to use employees to bolster city revenue, your own image, and the success of Skytrain, then please fulfill your duty and obligation to provide them with a safe environment. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCutcheon. Councilman DeCecio.
May I ask staff a question on that? Because we've been involved in that. Is there any way -- and I've talked to Councilman Noakowski about it before, too. We could just bring this forward to where we can actually do some more research on this. I think that the concerns and the complaints are pretty valid. I don't want to get -- I don't think legally I'm allowed to -- I see Brad shaking his head, so I don't know how far I can ask.
I think the question is really, he wants, with the information provided, maybe report it to the councilmen and all the council about the issues raised by Mr. McCutcheon, and then we can decide what policy I should take. James Dibler, followed by Ms. Barker, Diane Barker.
Hello. Hi. I am James Dibler. I live in Phoenix Center, Arizona, and Donald Vantrell, Council District Number Five. The President of Glendale Community College needs bus service at GCC North on 59th Avenue and Happy Valley. I know Phoenix dot A R I picks up and drops off disabled people to that location. There is a lot of disabled students going to Glendale Community College North Campus trying to get a education. There is no bus service at GCC North. The area around GCC North is considered Phoenix. The GCC President is trying to get bus service at GCC North Campus. I hope the City of Glendale does the right thing to extend 67th Avenue bus routes to GCC North to meet the demands of the campus college community. Next year, the City of Glendale and Peoria is planning to extend 83rd Avenue bus route from Columbus Road to Arrowhead Mall. The City of Glendale's plans to limit the 67th Avenue bus route from going to Arrowhead Mall and extend it to Arrowhead-Hatchaway on 67th Avenue and Union Hills. There is a lot of disabled people taking public transit every day that would benefit from this service. Please concern my idea to public transit officials. Thanks for noting and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dibler. Ms. Diane Barker.
Welcome back, Mayor and City Council, Diane Barker, and I'm ever concerned citizen, and I want to thank the previous speaker for speaking out on better service in the Valley and fundamentally how we could do it. And it's really not going to get into all of your pocketbooks. It's called customer service. Now, what is good customer service? The City of Phoenix has vision statements for it, and, you know, we can -- what it is, is walking the talk, and it starts from the very top. Are we going to participate? That's an American idea when we say we're going to, you know, fight for our country. Many of us have families and ourselves. We've enlisted. Well, why can't we enlist in participating in democracy, participating in cutting down in pollution congestion, and through customer service, we can do this because we go out and we find out what you want, and then essentially, we sell it back to you, and it's for a price. So it doesn't all have to run off of government. We could have some very good -- now, what I'm looking at, our future, we don't have government pay for everything, like the future train. And I'm not talking about the one that they're studying 100 miles an hour from here to Tucson. I'm talking about a fast train that is innovative, and it has -- carries for-profit passengers and freight. It's new. It's in the sun corridor, one of the megaopolis economic spheres. And foundations and people that can make a profit and know about this will invest in government will give the land. And what we do is, is that it will go faster than your car, and it won't be subject to the accidents that happen or those terrible dust storms that we try to fight in court and just call them exceedances, and we have nothing to do with it. Half of the pollutants come from your cars and trucks, folks. Those are the particulates that we blow up. So we now need to know that all of us have responsibility to Arizona, which is a part of the United States, which lets fly the flag. City of Phoenix says it's an all-American city. Let's get that flag out there. We go out, we give customer service, and you know what? When you get somebody that complains, it's not like, option one, are you a rational person? Press it. Option two, are you a whiner? Option three, are you angry? Well, you know, two and three are going to get a robocall, and they may not get a call back, but great customer service answers all of them because they're not afraid of conflict. Matter of fact, they embrace who's criticizing because they can become one of the best allies after they solve the problem. Let's do it.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. I have no other cards for citizen comments. We'll move forward and on our agenda. And last, for a little point of personal privilege here, I believe that our planning director, Alan Stevenson, our outstanding planning director, and his wife Laura are here, and they brought their beautiful baby. And at the request of Alan's mother-in-law, they'd like a picture with our council, and we always follow what our mothers-in-law say. So if the council would come over to my right, to the left, my right, left of the stage, we'll take a picture with Alan, Laura, and their beautiful baby. All right. City Clerk, would you please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G 6191, 6192, and 6195 through 6198, S 42800 through 42844, and resolutions number 21463 and 21465 through 21473.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes for previous meetings. Councilman DeCecio, did you have a chance to review formal meeting minutes for June 1, 2016?
I did not, Mayor. I'd like to continue them for a week.
Motion to continue those minutes? Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Councilwoman Williams. Did you have a chance to review the special meeting minutes for June 14, 2016?
I did. Believe them to be a correct move of approval.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman Noakowski, formal meeting minutes, June 15, 2016.
Mayor, move to approve them.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, formal meeting minutes, June 22, 2016.
I did not.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, formal meeting minutes, June 22, 2016.
I did not.
Second.
We have a motion to continue and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilwoman Stark, formal meeting minutes, July 1, 2016.
Mayor, I did, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilwoman Noakowski, formal meeting minutes, July 1, 2016.
Mayor, I did, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. How about City Council boards and commission nominations?
Motion to approve City Council board and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. It appears that we have many members of the public here to serve on boards and commissions, so I will come down to the floor on my right, and if you could please stand, we'll swear you in, and then please come behind the dais so that council members can thank you for your service in advance. All right. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Lord Rynickens.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Do solemnly swear.
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies
And defend them against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of the office of
The office of
I'm filling the blank.
Human Services Commission
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Your official. Thank you for your service in advance.
Thank you.
All in favor on 161 through 163. All right. Next on the agenda are liquor license applications. Items 1 through 76, 77, and 78 are continuances or -- okay.
Correct.
So there are a record 76 liquor license applications on our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on those applications?
Move approval of items 1 through 76.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on those items? All right. There are numerous cards, but individuals who are in favor of the item, no opposition cards. Are any comments or questions of members of this council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman Gallego, 77 and 78 are liquor license applications in your district. How would you like to proceed?
I move continuance of items 77 and 78 to the September 21, 2016 formal council meeting.
We have a motion, we have a second to continue the items in the vice mayor's district.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning, items 79 through 163. Vice Mayor, are we prepared with an omnibus motion on those items?
Yes. A motion to suspend the rules and move items 84 and 85 to the end of the agenda?
All right. So the request is that we move 84 and 85 to the end of the agenda. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those items we moved to the end of the agenda. Vice Mayor.
All right. Motion to approve items 79 through 163, except the following: items 79K, 79S, 79Y, 80, 84, 85, 102 through 112, and 159. Item 82 is being continued to the September 7, 2016 meeting. Items 161 through 163 are being continued to November 2, 2016. Items 98, 105, 128, and 143 have been withdrawn, and excluding the following items for public comment: 80, 85, 100, 119, 127, 128, 159. I apologize. I had read that we would accept 102 through 112. 102 is in the omnibus motion. 109 through 112 would be held for comment.
Okay. That is the omnibus motion. Are there any questions on the omnibus motion? Okay. Was there a second? I apologize. There is a second.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 79K is next. We have a motion on 79K.
Move approval of item 79K.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on 79K? Any comments or questions, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 79K is next. We have a motion on 79K.
Move approval of item 79K.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on 79K? Any comments or questions, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So that item passes on an eight-to-one vote, 79S.
Move approval of item 79S.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any cards? Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes unanimously. Next item is item number 109.
Move approval of item 109.
We have a motion and a second on 109. Are there any cards? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. All right. City Clerk, would you please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G 6191, 6192, and 6195 through 6198, S 42800 through 42844, and resolutions number 21463 and 21465 through 21473.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes for previous meetings. Councilman DeCecio, did you have a chance to review formal meeting minutes for June 1, 2016?
I did not, Mayor. I'd like to continue them for a week.
Motion to continue those minutes? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Councilwoman Williams. Did you have a chance to review the special meeting minutes for June 14, 2016?
I did. Believe them to be a correct move of approval.
The motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is Councilwoman Waring. Formal meeting minutes, June 22, 2016.
I did not.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Councilman Waring, formal meeting minutes, June 15, 2016.
Mayor, move to approve them.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Noakowski, formal meeting minutes, June 15, 2016.
Mayor, I did, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilwoman Stark, formal meeting minutes, July 1, 2016.
Mayor, I did, and I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is boards and commissions, who have a motion relative to mayor's board and commission nominations.
Motion to approve mayor's boards and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. It appears that we have many members of the public here to serve on boards and commissions, so I will come down to the floor on my right, and if you could please stand, we'll swear you in, and then please come behind the dais so that council members can thank you for your service in advance. All right. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Lord Rynickens.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
and defend them against all enemies
And defend them against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of the office of
The office of
I'm filling the blank.
Human Services Commission
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Help me God.
Your official. Thank you for your service in advance.
Thank you.
All in favor on 161 through 163.
And we're still waiting.
All right. Next on the agenda are liquor license applications. Items 1 through 76, 77, and 78 are continuances or -- okay.
Correct.
So there are a record 76 liquor license applications on our agenda. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on those applications?
Move approval of items 1 through 76.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on those items? All right. There are numerous cards, but individuals who are in favor of the item, no opposition cards. Are any comments or questions of members of this council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Councilman Noakowski, formal meeting minutes, June 15, 2016.
All right. There are numerous cards, but individuals who are in favor of the item, no opposition cards. Are any comments or questions of members of this council?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on our agenda are ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning, items 79 through 163. Vice Mayor, are we prepared with an omnibus motion on those items?
Yes. A motion to suspend the rules and move items 84 and 85 to the end of the agenda?
All right. So the request is that we move 84 and 85 to the end of the agenda. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those items we moved to the end of the agenda. Vice Mayor.
All right. Motion to approve items 79 through 163, except the following: items 79K, 79S, 79Y, 80, 84, 85, 102 through 112, and 159. Item 82 is being continued to the September 7, 2016 meeting. Items 161 through 163 are being continued to November 2, 2016. Items 98, 105, 128, and 143 have been withdrawn, and excluding the following items for public comment: 80, 85, 100, 119, 127, 128, 159. I apologize. I had read that we would accept 102 through 112. 102 is in the omnibus motion. 109 through 112 would be held for comment.
Okay. That is the omnibus motion. Are there any questions on the omnibus motion?
No.
Okay. Was there a second? I apologize. There is a second.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 79K is next. We have a motion on 79K.
Move approval of item 79K.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on 79K? Any comments or questions, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item 79K is next. We have a motion on 79K.
Move approval of item 79K.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Are there any cards on 79K? Any comments or questions, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. So that item passes on an eight-to-one vote, 79S.
Move approval of item 79S.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any cards? Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Wow.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes on an eight-to-one vote of -- oh, 72?
71.
71. Excuse me, 71 vote of this council. 79Y.
Move approval of item 79Y.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any cards? Any comments, members of this council, or questions? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Is that 71 or 81?
81.
All right. That one passed on an eight-to-one vote. Item number 80 is next. Item 80 is a request to reconsider 40th Street and Dynamite Road. This is a case that was heard before our City Council break. There are one card wishing to speak and a few cards at least listed not wishing to speak. Do we have -- Noakowski, Waring, it's in your district. How do you wish -- you want a motion first or --
I think Elda can make the motion, right?
She can request reconsideration.
Anybody can make her. Actually, she did request reconsideration, so she was the only one to do that. Now, once that's been requested, it's then -- yes. I will make the motion to reconsider.
All right. So we have a motion to reconsider. Councilman DeCecio has seconded that motion. Are there -- let's see. Mr. Bold, did you wish to write testimony on the motion?
Not necessary.
All right. And then we have a few other cards. I think they're not wishing to speak but opposed. Mary Markey, is that right? I apologize. Robert Markey.
[inaudible]
Todd Scorro. And Alan Jones. Now, Todd and Alan are in favor of the proposal, and Mary and Robert were opposed, so there's two on each side of the items. The motion is to accept the reconsideration. There was a second. Any comments or questions by members of this council? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously, so the substantive item will be heard on a future agenda. Today was just to allow for there to be reconsideration process.
That's correct, Mayor. The substantive item has to be posted in accordance with the applicable requirements.
Thank you very much. Next item is item number 100.
Move approval of item number 100, which is a memorandum of understanding with the United States Postal Inspection Services for Police Services.
Do we have a second? Mr. Clark, up to two minutes of testimony on item 100.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark, and I'm so glad that this has come up today. I just, first of all, I want to thank the hard-working members of the United States Postal Service who work very hard, but unfortunately, this touches me personally, this particular thing, I hope you're going to pass. About four or five years ago, when I had the new GI Bill, yes, I was one of those people who didn't get my check direct deposit, and yes, you shouldn't do that when you're sending -- you shouldn't send your money through the mail. But at least I came to believe, and others came to believe, including the congressperson that I contacted, that somebody in the postal service had filched, stolen my check. I tried to contact the inspector general. I know in California, you might have just read, that they've just had a big case or a group of cases where they've got some corruption going on in there and indicted some people. And again, to the hard-working United States Postal Service people who are afraid to speak up because they have to pay their bills and feed their families and don't want retribution as whistleblowers, because we know all the way up at the top, our president, who goes after whistleblowers, people are afraid to speak up sometimes, and that's understandable. I just really, really hope that you pass this because we need to, you know, yes, should people mail their money through the mail? No. But we should have a reasonable expectation as citizens that the people that we entrust our mail, our correspondence to, are not going to be ripping it off. And I tried. I tried to complain to them. So I hope you can make more headway so that my fellow residents of Phoenix will know that their mail isn't being taken and then being laundered through secondary thieving syndicates to sell off their checks. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion in favor of item 100. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. That item passes unanimously. Next item is item number 109.
Move approval of item 109.
We have a motion and a second on 109. Are there any cards? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.[1603.79] Now Todd and Alan are in favor of the proposal. And Mary and Robert were opposed, so there's two on each side of the, on the items. The motion is to accept the reconsideration. There was a second. Any comments or questions by members of this council? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, so the substantive item will be heard on a future agenda. Today was just to allow for there to be reconsideration process.
That's correct, Mayor. The substantive item has to be posted in accordance with the applicable requirements.
Thank you very much. Next item is item number one-hundred.
Move approval of item number one-hundred, which is a memorandum of understanding with the United States Postal Inspection Services for Police Services.
Do we have a second? Mr. Clark, up to two minutes of testimony on item one-hundred.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark, and I'm so glad that this has come up today. I just, first of all, I want to thank the hard-working members of the United States Postal Service who work very hard. But unfortunately, this touches me personally, this particular thing, I hope you're going to pass. About four or five years ago, when I had the new G.I. bill, yes, I was one of those people who didn't get my check direct deposit, and yes, that, you shouldn't do that when you're sending, you shouldn't send your money through the mail. But at least I came to believe, and others came to believe, including the congressperson that I contacted, that somebody in the postal service had filched, stolen my check. I tried to contact the inspector general. I know in California, you might have just read, that they've just had a big case, or a group of cases where they've got some corruption going on in there and indicted some people. And again, to the hard-working United States Postal Service people who are afraid to speak up because they have to pay their bills and feed their families and don't want retribution as whistleblowers, because we know, all the way up at the top, our president, who goes after whistleblowers, that people are afraid to speak up sometimes, and that's understandable. I just really, really hope that you pass this, because we need to, you know, yes, should people mail their money through the mail? No, but we should have a reasonable expectation as citizens that the people that we entrust our mail, our correspondence to, are not going to be ripping it off. And I tried, I tried to complain to them, so I hope you can make more headway so that my fellow residents of Phoenix will know that their mail isn't being taken and then being laundered through secondary thieving syndicates to sell off their checks. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion in favor of item one-hundred. We have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item is item number one-oh-nine.
Move approval of item one-oh-nine.
We have a motion and a second on one-oh-nine. Are there any cards? Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on a seven-to-two vote. Item number one-ten.
Move approval of item one-ten.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any cards? Any comments, members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, also passes seven-to-two. One-eleven?
Move approval of item one-eleven.
We have a second on one-eleven?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on one-eleven. Any cards? Are there any comments, members of this council, or questions? Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, also seven-to-two vote. One-twelve is next, we have a motion.
Move approval of item one-twelve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any cards? Comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
One-twelve, bus bay improvements.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on a seven-to-two vote. Next item on the agenda is item one-nineteen.
Move approval of item one-nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clark, up to two minutes of testimony on item one-nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a resident of Phoenix, District One. Yeah, I really hope you pass this. I'm hoping that somehow more of our residents will take public transit. Unfortunately, we need quicker turnaround times, and I'm one of the people who drives a car. I try to take the bus when I can, but we all can't afford to wait when we have children and jobs to go to for two or three hours. So hopefully, this will help do it. And the other thing is, I've tried to deal with the Arizona Department of Administration, but they don't allow normal citizens in to even make appointments to help fix the Martin Luther King statue at the state legislature, getting off the subject there. That is, has been defaced, and nobody there, not one, not one person from either party will fix. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion in favor. We have a second on item one-nineteen. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Item one-twenty-seven?
Move approval of item one-twenty-seven, intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for installation of an injection well near the Cave Creek landfill.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clark, two minutes.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm a resident of Phoenix. I live right near a landfill that was closed and in jogging last several days by the rec center. I noticed water coming out through an irrigation ditch by that closed landfill. So I'm hoping you will pass also this ordinance. I mean, as you say, right here in the paper, the agenda, we have poisonous water plumes in Phoenix. We've had historically over by the McDowell Mountains, the huge plant, land, water plume that's shut down our water use to residents due to pollution. We've got to stop this in this age, and we have children being born with deformities, autism, all of these things happening. We should be talking about this. I hope you're going to take proactive action with this well, and I really congratulate you on pushing the recycling of our materials. We've got to do something now. Our children need it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number one-fifty-nine. Do we have a motion on one-fifty-nine?
Second.
We have a motion in favor of one-fifty-nine. We have a second. Councilman DeCiccio?
I have potential.
Councilman DeCiccio has a potential conflict and will not be participating in the item. Are there any cards on that item? All right, Mr. Bold, do you wish to write testimony on this item? All right. In favor of the proposal, so in favor of what the motion is, is Mark Singerman and Jean Constantine. Are there any questions about item one-fifty-nine from members of this council? The motion is in favor. There was a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio. I'm sorry. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, that item passes on an eight-to-zero vote before this city council. We took an earlier vote to move eighty-four and eighty-five to the end of the agenda. We're now completed with that agenda, so we will take items eighty-four and eighty-five now. Mr. City Manager, if you could introduce the team that will be presenting on this item and have them come forward and present what is on the agenda here today, and then we'll see if there's a motion from members of this council, and then we'll take any cards relative to that motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, welcome back. It is, over the summer, at your direction, the staff team has continued to work on this item, and leading the team has been Tony Macaron from the city manager's office. She will be the lead presenter. With her is Assistant Police Chief Sandra Renteria and our city attorney, Brad Holm. There are others who are available, and we'll introduce them as they might need to speak. With that, we're happy to answer questions, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Macaron for that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As Ed mentioned, we've been working over the summer on this project, and for the past year and a half, we've been working with the community to develop a secondary municipal ID or a unified city services card. The goal of the project was for it to be a public-private partnership with the city working with our stakeholders from the outside. We wanted to develop a secondary municipal ID or a city services card, and I'm happy to report today that we were able to accomplish both with this effort. So the card will serve as a secondary municipal ID, but with its launch in February of 2017, it will launch as a library card, so that feature will be included with the launch in 2017. There's a desire to also incorporate other city services into the card in the future, and SF Global, the proposer, is willing to work with the city, such as incorporating parks and golf and human services and other city services into the card. The council also directed staff to pursue this option with no cost to the city, and I'm pleased to report that we've been able to accomplish that as well. On the screen is a sample of what the card may look like. It's still in draft form. We're still working on it, but this is what the card could look like. It would be a Phoenix City Services card, and the elements on the card include biometrics and other information, and on the bottom, there are the disclosures where it talks about the card, that it is not official license, that's per state law. It is a secondary ID. It does not satisfy the requirements for state-issued ID, and it also is not a City of Phoenix employee ID. The back of the card, you'll notice, has a barcode feature, and that's how we're able to launch the card with the library card feature. The barcode will be activated, and we will be able to have residents visit our libraries and use this card as a library card. Today's staff is recommending that we enter into a five-year contract with SF Global to develop this card, and also, we're recommending that it's no cost to the city. We've been able to work with the private sector and our stakeholders on this, so we're recommending it's no cost to the city and that we enter into a five-year contract on the card. That concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you have today.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Macaron. I've been working hard over the summer to bring it to this, bring it to this point. Okay, so we have Assistant Chief Renteria is here, as well as Brad Holm, to, I guess, answer any questions as they may, as they may arise.
Yes, and we have representatives also from the Parks Department and Library and IT, all of the, we've had an internal city team working on this.
All right, good. So they're able to answer any questions. I'll now turn it to the council, see if there's a motion on this item, see if we can get a second. Then we'll hear the cards, and then we'll have the opportunity for council members to ask any questions or make any statements they'd like to make. Councilman Pastor.
This has been a long year and a half to get to where we are today, and it's not exactly, it's a good start. As I had started it and began at the beginning in the PATE Committee, it was supposed to be a one municipal ID, we're at least getting our, starting with the library, but then could expand to other departments. So I would like to thank the staff and community for some good work. My motion is, I move that the city enter into a five-year contract with SF Global LLC to implement and manage a cost-neutral. And I just want you to remember that, it's cost-neutral, because that's always been with everybody supporting this. Secondary ID, it is a secondary ID, and Phoenix City Services Card Program with the following provisions. SF Global staff will operate out of two existing city facilities, such as library or community center. The card will cost no more than thirty dollars and will expire three years after it's issued. Pre-registration for the card will begin in December with the launch of the first week of February 2017. I further move to instruct staff to work with SF Global and the community stakeholders to develop the specifics of the implementation plan and work to keep cost of the card as low as possible to the public, as well as ensure that any public spaces used for issuing the card are completely open and accessible. Thank you.
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
We have a motion from Councilman Pastor, second from Councilman Noakowski, and Councilman Valenzuela also want to do seconds, so we'll have two seconds on the motion. So that's the motion that is on the floor. Now I'll turn to members of the community that wish to provide testimony on this important item. City Manager, you're looking, is that a proper motion? We're okay on that?
Yes, it's a motion to approve item number eighty-four, which is to enter into the contract, as I understood it.
Yeah, with the, with the, with the additional provisions provided by Councilman Pastor. Okay. First speaker indicating he's in favor of this item, Lorenzo Sierra, would you like to speak? Councilman, good to see you. And then followed by Jeremy Helfcott, representing the Commission on Human Relations. Councilman, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for having me here today. I am a councilman in Abindale, but today I'm here as vice chair of the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I've come today to express our support for the One Phoenix ID Card. As an organization committed to business growth, education, and civic engagement in the Latino community, we see the availability of the Phoenix One ID Card as an opportunity to facilitate business transactions, encourage parental involvement, involvement in schools, and improve public safety in all communities. As you know, the card will benefit a wide range of people in the community, from children to the homeless and our immigrant populations. The One Phoenix ID will function as a unifying force in our community by facilitating access to local public service, even as it allows the card's holders to build strong ties in the city of Phoenix. Again, the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce is proud to support the One Phoenix ID and commend the organizations and community volunteers who have worked so hard to make this a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Lorenzo, for being here and that good testimony. Jeremy Helfcott, followed by Reverend Aaron Tamaio.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Councilman Williams, good to hear you. The rest of you, good to see you back from the summer. Jeremy Helfcott, on behalf of the city's Human Relations Commission. None of you will believe me, but I'm going to be brief. I'm going to try not to reiterate points that have been made before, other than to say that the Human Relations Commission of the city was one of the first public bodies before which the proposal for the One Phoenix ID was brought. We were unanimously and enthusiastically behind the program from the get-go. We have continually, over the past two years, reaffirmed our support, as recently as earlier this year, and I am very excited personally, as well as on behalf of the commission, to see this here for this vote today. I would ask each of your support in voting for this measure. We know now that the solution has come to be cost-neutral to the city. We know that this is going to provide a valuable service to members of a number of our diverse communities in the city of Phoenix, and encourage all of the things that Councilman Sierra spoke to. I won't repeat them. Again, I will ask you for your yea vote today, and on behalf of the commission and myself, I thank you. Happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. Any questions for him? Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Reverend Tamaio, followed by Mr. Leonard Clark. Good to see you.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Reverend Aaron Tamaio. I'm the executive director of Arizona Faith Network. I speak not only by behalf of myself, but also for the organization. When we, as an organization, were presented with this initiative, we really began to think about the idea of identification, of having an ID and what it means to be part of a community. What it means not only to be part of a community, but also to have access, access to the services and benefits that come with it. and benefits that come with it. As a pastor, not only does our theology speak strongly as of a sense of belonging and the benefits of community, but we strive to build communities within our parishes, within our faith communities, of diverse individuals. And having that sense of identification with a community makes us who we are and makes us stronger. If someone within our circles has difficulty, it's up to us to find a solution that all may be included and benefit as full partners. And the City Services Card, the One Phoenix ID, does just this. We heard stories of some of our brothers and sisters in Phoenix who have felt excluded or hindered from being part of their community, and we, as an organization, immediately felt a sense of calling to support this initiative. The Board of Arizona Faith Network, which is made up of people of different denominations and interfaith leaders, has served as a fully supportive partner of this One Phoenix ID initiative, because we truly believe in what it is aiming to accomplish. The reason we've done so is threefold. As people of faith, we speak for ways in which the community can lift up the common good of all God's people. The second reason is because the city services not only helps to make these services, the services of the entire city, more available, but it also makes the process of obtaining these services more efficient, something that's really important. And third, perhaps the most important in my heart, is that the municipal ID provides a layer of protection for our marginalized community members. I would ask that you vote yes in supporting this ID and enter into contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Tamayo, thank you for your testimony. Leonard Clark was next. Mr. Clark, followed by Mayor Cruz Ramirez.
Mayor and council, I thought that I, so, am I going to be able to speak on 85?
Yes. Would you prefer to speak? You want to wait till you?
Oh, but I can speak on this soon.
If you want to speak on 85 now, go ahead.
I can't say you never gave me anything, Mayor, thank you. I'm strongly for this. I really appreciate the fact that even now, our arch-conservative friend in Mexico, meeting with the Mexican president, has softened his stance. We've all got to get along, we're not talking about lowering our borders, we're talking about the fact that we share the same concerns and worries about using our city facilities, using the library, not having to go here with one card, membership card, and over there with another. It's about time we continue and we finally get something done with this card, so I strongly salute you for doing it. It's not about conservative or liberal politics, it's about human beings. That's what Phoenix is about. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Mayor Cruz Ramirez is next, followed by Maria Rodriguez. Maria Rodriguez, did you want to provide testimony? Thank you very much, thanks for coming. How about Joseph, oh, Joseph Larios, you're next. You're going to pass, all right. Vidi Hernandez.
My name is Vidi Diana Hernandez, I am part of the One Phoenix Coalition and Director of Center for Neighborhood Leadership. Councilwoman Pastor, thank you for that motion, and thank you everyone for the continued support on this initiative. We have been fighting for this for several years, and getting this to be something that's very, that's very critical in the lives of many people. You have heard dozens of stories, and hundreds of people have been coming to subcommittees, to council meetings, and so forth, right? Sharing their stories of not being able to volunteer at the kids' school, sharing stories of not being able to call the police, of being too scared to call the police even after instances of rape, right? We have heard stories of seniors and community with disabilities that cannot access identification, and homeless shelters, and survivors of domestic violence that struggle with the same instances. So, this is definitely something that we are excited for in moving Phoenix forward, in making it a more inclusive city, in making it a city that is accessible to everyone, that is inclusive of everyone, and that respects and celebrates everyone's individuality. And so we are, we are in favor of the motion. We also, further to that, want to make sure that we are partners in creating, finalizing the details to have a successful launch in February, and that we support in all our capacity to make sure that we are successful in getting this card to as many people as possible. We want a card that is affordable, that is accessible, and that is inclusive to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vidi. Sandra Weir.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak once again in favor of these items. I've worked with the Coalition as a member of the faith community throughout the development of the card, and I heartily support items 84 and 85, provided that the greatest number of individual Phoenix residents will be able to have access to the card, and also that the cost to the individuals is kept very affordable. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Submitting cards, not wishing to speak. Diane Barker in favor. Mitzi Casco in favor. Cynthia Domenzain in favor. Leidy Robledo in favor. Franco Hernandez in favor, and Maya Blanco in favor. That's all the cards I have in front of me. Did anyone else in the audience wish to provide testimony for this council on item 84, or will take testimony in 85 as well? Okay, so I said, at this point, then I'll turn over to members of the council for any questions or comments that they may have. Do any member of the council this time like to ask any questions or comments? Councilwoman Weir, please.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Question for staff. In December of 2015, you gave us a city council report for the subcommittee, I believe it was. It talks about the secondary municipal ID card, and it says what it cannot do. So I'm just going to read the list, and then you tell me maybe if this has changed in the last eight, nine months. It cannot be used to establish, cannot be used to establish lawful presence in the United States or in Arizona. It could not be used to obtain employment. It could not be used to apply for a business license. It could not be used to register to vote. It could not be used to obtain state or local public benefits. It could not be used to obtain housing assistance, and it could not be used to obtain health insurance or coverage on the federal exchange. So, at least one of these speakers mentioned it'd be great to help them get benefits. I'm not sure, this is a pretty all-encompassing list. Is there anything that's changed in this list?
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, no, those are all correct statements of the current law. Thank you.
The one thing I've ever found that this thing could actually maybe do, is that some school districts who basically, I guess, lower the identification criteria for parents to visit and volunteer on campus, so that was item two, I think, on here, yes, it might be accepted. It's up to the school districts, of course, at a certain point, since we don't really have any supporting documentation, that's a primary ID for this card, you might as well just write the names down on a piece of paper. I'm not even sure why the school district would be asking for an ID at that point. I mean, you don't really know who these people are. I think that's a little frustrating. This card costs, it says here on the sheet you gave me today, $30, Tony, but it was $35 when we spoke yesterday.
Correct. So, in update, when we have continued our negotiations with SF Global, Councilman, they have said that they can issue the card at $30, no more than $30.
So now it's $30, and that was predicated, I think you told me, on selling $10,000 a year?
The estimate was $10,000 a year.
Do you know how many have been sold in other cities that have this?
I'm happy to have Dr. Paula Cruz Cattash speak to that item.
Well, I will, I'll give a couple examples. Oakland, it was $6,000 over two years. In Richmond, it was 450 in about 16 months. So for us to get to $10,000 a year might be a big leap. What happens if we don't sell 10,000 of these in a year, every year? What happens with the price? Because somebody talked about it being affordable. Please remember this is being-
I think they're trying to bring someone to the table who can give the best answer to that question. Tony, who's it going to be?
And just remember, this is billed as a library card as well. Keep in mind that library cards are free, so why would somebody pay $30 for something they can get for free?
Dr. Paula Cruz Cattash is with SF Global, and she can talk about the systems that they are working with the cities of Oakland and Richmond.
Thank you.
Yes, I, Dr. Paula Cruz Cattash, and I'm one of the co-owners of the company SF Global, which we created outside of the university, where I incubated, along with Dr. Nahosa, the concept of a municipal ID card that also can serve in other places as a financial services card, with the goal purposes of banking on bank folks. Those are US citizens, legal residents, and also immigrant folks who have had bank accounts, but have either been kicked out, or they walk away from their bank accounts, and also the many populations that have already been spoken about that lack an ID card that is accepted by our institutions here. I just wanted to underscore that folks, I think erroneously, talk about undocumented folks, and again, these could be legal residents as well, coming out of prison or elsewhere. But what we have found is that people are really hyper-documented, because every single day, a person needs to be able to prove their identity for some kind of program, or to be able to get into some kind of building, et cetera. So what we find coming into our offices are people who literally coming in with bags or file, little file boxes of documents that they will try to use. This could be an Israeli military card, and in some places, they have found that someone somewhere in this country has accepted that, because they're looking to be able to identify this person. So, again, in terms of your question, in the many different cities, New Haven was the very first city to issue a municipal ID card, and that came about because of a murder of an immigrant worker who came out of a check-cashing place because he could not get a bank account. And that led to fire.
My question was about the cost of the card.
So, in New Haven, there are over 12,000 persons that carry that card, and, again, issued as an ID-only card, and they have contacted us to be able to now add a financial services function to that, because of the lack of uptake of that ID card by the mainstream banks. So they want to have a financial feature on it.
Doctor, and then Councilwoman Weir specifically asked, do you have numbers in some of the other cities which you operate?
Yes.
His concern was that the model on which the $30 fee was based may overestimate the number of users of the card, and he wanted some information from some of the other cities. Please.
Yes, and in other cities, in New York City, that has now been out for a year and a half, we're talking about almost, I think it's gone to about 600,000 people who have applied for that card. Again, that city has chosen to invest financially in that program, and they've really built it out, and in that case-
$14 million they spent, right? We're not doing that.
They've spent a great deal, and one of the, one of what we're doing, SF Global is doing, is also understanding that that kind of budget is not available to almost any other city in the country, and therefore, our goal is also to make it affordable for municipalities. So we're looking out, not just for that person that needs the ID card, we're also looking out for municipalities who want to be able to be more inclusive, and so looking for ways to partner with them in order to provide this kind of ID card and city services card. So that is what part of our mission is. We are a mission-driven, for-profit company, and in the other cities, again, the, I don't know what the numbers for Newark, Newark last year came out with a card, we don't run that particular program, but there are numbers of cities, and I can provide the council with any of the numbers that you might choose.
There are additional-
I just wanted to underscore that when one says that this card is not used, cannot be used for health services, et cetera, we want to remember that the card is for everybody. That means for US citizens and legal residents. So in our experience, in our program, that health, that card has been used to enroll folks, US citizens and legal residents, because they're the only ones that can make, take advantage of Obamacare. In California, we call it Cover California. So when the enrollments happened, then the enrollees, insurance companies, government, and faith-based, and CBOs, they sent people, these, again, are US citizens and legal residents who were ID-challenged, did not have an ID, so that they could get the municipal ID card, so they could then be enrolled in the health exchange program. That is also true for other programs. In California, you can go to the Department of Health website itself, and this is a state program, where people, again, US citizens, legal residents, and in some categories, non-residents, if you're a pregnant woman, et cetera, they can use a local government card to enroll a person in Medicare. So I would also say that one wants to not necessarily predetermine what these cards can be used for, and which institutions and what level of government they'll be used for, because these programs are evolving.
All right, thank you, doctor.
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Weir, you have additional questions, please.
I just wanted, you asked another question, I just wanted to clarify, Councilman, because I think it's a good one, deserves an answer. The way the program is structured, based on council direction, whether they issue one card, 1,000 cards, 10,000 cards, or 100,000 cards, the cost to the city is still the same, so the risk for it is borne by the company. That's correct.
Because it's nice what happens in New York City, that's totally immaterial here. They spent, again, Tony, you had the number, I think it was like $14 million, and they had quite a bit in outlay per year. We're talking about it being revenue-neutral, so the New York City example is, I would classify it as non-responsive.
What it does speak to, it speaks to the, it speaks to the need of the card, and it also speaks to the fact that it's not just folks, it's people that have ID and that have bank accounts who have actually turned out to that card.
Thank you, doctor, very much. So, Councilwoman Weir, you have additional questions, please.
If taxpayers pay for it, then they're going to want it, but at $30 a pop, or like in Oakland, you couldn't really give them away. Richmond, it was 450 the first 16 months. You make your money, this is not, I'm glad you said for-profit, because this is not some do-gooder organization. You do bank cards, right? With extremely onerous fees, is my understanding.
Councilwoman Weir, I can answer that question.
Ms. Macron, please.
In the RFP that we issued, we asked for respondents to look at three different areas. One was a municipal ID card. The secondary was a municipal ID card with a debit card option, and the third was the unified city services concept. When the panel got together, we met three different times, and the panel had internal staff members on it and external. I'd like to thank, actually, council members recommended some folks to be on that panel. Heather Hammel from the community, Michael Soto, Vince Ansalmo, and also Tim Rafferty. Those were community members who took a lot of time to participate on our city's panel, and I really do appreciate their time and their input during this process. So, the RFP had three different areas that respondents could answer, and the part about the debit card option, SF Global did respond, and the panel chose not to move forward with that option. So the panel chose just to move forward with the secondary ID and the unified city services card, combining those into one, because we're launching it as a library card.
Okay, we're launching it, Mayor, as a library card, but I suspect maybe down the road, that's not the plan. If you look at these fees, for those of you, I know at least one person here comes up and talks a lot about the 1% quite frequently, I would argue these guys are in the 1%, they're not out there trying to help everybody else. So you can look up the fees, they're online, I've got them written down here if you'd like to see them. You know, you seem to indicate that Brad's information on this report from the city, that maybe the card could be used for all these things that I read quite clearly, I thought, and received a very clear answer. It can't be used for these things. Brad, are you sticking by the, it can't be used from this thing, these things, or are we listening to the person from California?
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, we've looked very carefully at Arizona law, and there are a number of things that we informed the subcommittee of last year, and we stick by those. They're, they include, for example, to establish lawful presence.
So what she said was false? Not to put too fine a point on it, but-
Not necessarily, because what she's example of is California and other states. So in other states, it may be a little different, but we're following our state law.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, you're absolutely correct. I'm no expert on California law, so I would really hesitate to say how the card could be used there.
And California law has basically no, nothing to do with what we're doing here. Absolutely nothing.
You're absolutely correct.
So as I said, for our purposes, false. So, a lot of this has come out of the idea that police can force witnesses and victims to produce ID. That is false, correct, Brad?
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, you're correct.
That is completely false, right? We've covered this before, so there's no ambiguity there. So people who are claiming, "I didn't serve as a witness," or "I didn't report a crime," they are just misinformed. I'm not saying in some cases tragically so, perhaps, but if they knew the law, they would know they are not compelled to give identification, even if asked. I'm not saying the police aren't going to ask, they ask, but you're not compelled to give it. Just so I'm clear, that's correct, right?
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, you're correct.
So, when you have this card, do you go into the police database? I guess that's for Commander Renteria. Chief, please. I'm sorry.
No problem. Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, just for clarification, you mean get the card and then go into the database?
Are they in the database where everybody who has, so, so who's in the database? My understanding, based on previous testimony, is it's people who have committed a crime, and then people who have primary forms of identification, driver's license, state ID, something like that. That's it.
I think the answer that you can clarify, I think your question is, when you get the city ID card, do you go into the police database? The answer would be no. You would only be in that police database if some of the things you mentioned are the case.
So if you committed a crime, or you have a primary ID too, I have no idea why you would spend $30 to get this card that's really only a library card, it's not a debit card, it's not anything else, when you can get a library card from us for free, probably you're not going to get a lot of citizens who want to do that. Doctor, just, I don't know why they would. So, so the idea was, well, now I'll have this ID to show to the police, but you're going to show this ID to the police, and they're going to run it through the database, and they're going to come up with nothing. They're going to have no more idea who you are than they do right now.
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, that is, I'm sorry.
Please go ahead.
If we, we will run the information like we would any other secondary or primary card that we have, if we're trying to identify somebody. So we would run that information, see what comes back on that. It's, it would be a starting point for us to try to identify the person that gave us that information.
But you wouldn't get a hit, because we're not putting this data into the computer.
Well, unless they were in for another reason.
Well, right, I mean, they committed a crime or something, but yes.
That's, or they have a different ID.
The card itself does not solve the problem. The card itself is useless for this purpose.
The card itself is a starting point, just like other cards.
How so? How is it a starting point?
Because it would be a card with names, with information, that would start us on the path of trying to identify the person.
With no primary identification to back it up, who knows who the person is? Okay, but it's a starting point, I mean, at best. So, the list, so you're going to have to come, so we're going to have to set up temporary workers to have people come in to get this card. Now you're saying there's going to be 10,000 a year, spread over, you know, however many days the city is open. I mean, we're actually going to go out and have to recruit people. Let me ask you this, Brad. If we give out these cards, on the basis of the card, if you come in and apply for a job, will we hire you at the city of Phoenix to do the temp work to give out these cards?
Mayor, Councilwoman Weir, we have certain employment responsibilities that are dictated by federal law, including eVerify and filling out an I-9 form, so this could not be the only piece of ID used to-
You'd have to have a primary form of identification.
Correct.
So, so you can't even use this card to get hired at the very city that's giving it out. That's how much we think about this card.
Okay, City Manager had a point real quick.
I think one other thing to add, to clarify, again, it's a little bit confusing, because the report in the packet was written before we got it fully clarified, so the city would not actually be hiring temporary workers as the motion-
Okay, that's what I was told yesterday, so.
Right, it changed, because through, last night into today, Tony worked with the doctor to arrange, to see whether SF Global would have that responsibility. So, this motion has SF Global responsible in two different sites to be the intake for this. It will not be the city clerk department, as we originally had thought we might have to do.
Okay, that is what you guys told me yesterday.
That's correct. That's what the confusion is, I apologize for that.
No, no problem, no problem. So, so people go to this company, that they're probably only going to have some kind of vague knowledge of who it is, if they even know the name, they're going to give them this apparently personal information, they're going to create a database, we're going to slap our logo on it. Last time I heard, data gets breached all the time. My wife got another letter from an office just the other day, "Hey, guess what? Your data got breached. Do you want us to pay for a year of security and so forth?" I've gotten several, obviously we've seen, I think Target, or Home Depot, there's been a whole bunch of them. This is not unusual. I think they have, claiming that they have never had a breach, but that doesn't mean they won't have one tomorrow. The data gets stolen, something bad happens, who's liable? Because we've authorized all this for the public's purpose, this is a city of Phoenix program, it's not an SF Global program. So who gets sued? Who has to pay restitution? Who has to, is that us? Do I get those calls in my office? Because I'm not thrilled with that idea.
So, Councilman, let me try to answer the first part, and then I'll turn it over to Brad for the second part. SF Global, we asked them that very question, have they ever had a data breach? They have not. Our IT staff and our security staff met with SF Global, talked with them several times during the vetting of the RFP, and our IT staff, as well as our security, Chief Security Information Officer, they were very comfortable with the security systems that SF Global has in place to protect individuals' data. So I'll turn it over to Brad for the other question.
Can I just interject at that point? I guess I would say the City of Phoenix is not claiming we will never have a data breach, right? I mean, nobody can guarantee that.
We are not, no one can guarantee that.
But at least, if we're going to have the responsibility, I think then we should actually be controlling the list. But giving it away to some people we vaguely met this summer, I think that's a mistake as well. As far as the question, Mr. Home, you have the answer?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Waring. So as part of the negotiation process with SF Global, we would insist on a broad indemnification provision, backed by insurance, so that if there ever were a data breach, and we were ever implicated in that in any way, shape, or form, then we would be able to seek indemnity from SF Global, and again, it'd be backed by insurance. That would be the plan to negotiate that, as part of the contract negotiations.
As far as subject to a subpoena or the list itself, so we're creating a list of people who, again, I wouldn't even understand why a citizen who has a social security card, a driver's license, a state ID, would need this card. Again, unless they wanted a really expensive library card that isn't going to help them in a police situation, certainly as much as a state-issued ID. So what happens to that list if the federal government decides to take action against people who are here? If it was me, and I want to take action and deport people, I would go straight to that list. Will they have access to that list? Just so people know, if they're putting themselves on this list, what they might be in for down the road, depending on how things go.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, so if a federal court issued a subpoena pursuant to some request on the part of a federal agency, including an immigration service, for example, then obviously that would be an SF Global issue, they would have to respond to the subpoena. At some point, they'd either contest the subpoena in federal court, or they would have to agree to provide the documents and the information subpoenaed.
So you'd be providing them a list?
Potentially.
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 I guess I'll just say this sounds like a really expensive library card that is not going to help you out in any situation that's listed here. Despite what they may do in California, that is completely immaterial. This ID is not going to help you in California, I wouldn't think. It's not going to help you in a police stop particularly. I don't, you know, maybe the officers will be like, "Okay, go on your merry way." But if they have concerns, and they're looking at this ID, and again, if you're a witness or a victim, you don't have to cough up an ID at all. So that's a spurious notion, as I've said before. In this case, you turn over the ID, and they're going to either have to take it on face value, or you're still not going to be in the system, and they're going to do whatever they would do in a situation where you had no ID. Commander's nodding, so I assume that's correct. I think that's a mistake at a time when we have really rampant ID theft. To throw another ID out there that's not really backed up by official government documents, I think is a big mistake. I think when I look at this company's behavior in regards to fees, those of you who take issue with Wall Street or Big Banks or whatever, I'm not saying I'm one of those people, I'm just saying, if you look at these fees, it is, in Oakland, check me if I'm wrong, $2.99 monthly fee, 75 cents every time you use the card, no matter how minor the purchase, $1.75 every time you call customer service, $1.50 for out-of-network ATMs, and $1 when you load up the card. So I guess this isn't a debit card, so that's good. I think this is the only, is this correct? This is the only place where it's not some kind of card? It's just a ID card for this company?
Yes.
Doctor?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Is there any other city where you have a card that's not some kind of bank card?
Yes.
You do have others?
We have, I'm not able to disclose the name, because they're about to have a press conference in September, a couple of weeks from now, a major city in another state. So we'll be, we're coming out in several other states, and in those cases, they're only IDs. So State of Connecticut, State of Michigan, State of Indiana, we're coming out with city ID cards, and they're only city ID cards. In those cases, the cities are also interested in, down the line, attaching financial services. We also, in the State of Connecticut, one of the cities that started as an ID-only card has now contracted us to add financial features to it, so...
Speaking to my fear that at some point, this is going to become a bank card, that's really going to be ripping people off. So again, think that, but that's the card that you have, so you're kind of stuck with that. And we're sanctioning it as a city council. We're putting our logo right on the card, according to the example that we saw. Brad, can you get this card with a passport from another country?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, it is proposed in the ordinance that's before you that, yes, you would be able to get it with a passport from another country.
So you're a citizen of another country, and the City of Phoenix is going to give you an ID. Does that happen elsewhere in the world?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, it does not happen very often elsewhere in the world.
Then you found one, right, Ontario?
We found one city. We've only had a...
Big world, Brad, that's a lot of cities.
We've only had about 24 hours to look, and we found one city. There are other cities that have slightly different cards, like a hospitality card in New Zealand, so that you can be a foreigner there and buy alcohol, but nothing really like this, except for in Ontario, that we found.
So I'm from Paris, I live in Paris, but I'm here for some reason, and I've got my passport. The City of Phoenix is going, and SF Global, is going to give you a City of Phoenix ID card. I guess, I just wonder, when I say it out loud, why would we do that?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, that's not a legal question, that's a boss question.
Well, let me ask it this way. Is there a residency requirement? I mean, how long do you have to live here before you can get a card?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, there is a residency requirement. You do have to live here for a certain period of time. I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, I think it's 90 days.
90 days?
Do I remember that right?
90 days, and Phoenix has given you an ID? Wow. Well, I hope nothing bad comes of this, guys. I know it's going to pass, so I'm sorry to belabor it. I just wanted to point out to the public, there are a few holes in this plan that could backfire. Just willy-nilly giving Phoenix IDs to foreign nationals, I don't know. I mean, I guess, I'm sure nothing could go wrong, what could possibly go wrong? I think this is a mistake, and maybe this isn't as well-thought-out. I was very surprised about the foreign national thing, for example, that I asked it, and nobody else had thought, all summer, to ask that. There were quite a few of these questions that I was pretty surprised. Made me ask, you know, what question are we solving? We say it's revenue neutral, but then staffers talked about working all summer on this. And I know they worked a lot with me, because I had several meetings with concerned constituents and so forth. So revenue neutral, it was not. We have to have a vote if you're going to use more than eight hours of city time. So we had that vote, so we know it was at least eight hours of, at least, probably Tony's time. But then I'm sure there were, you know, quite a few hours over the summer that could have been used for something else, certainly more meritorious than this. I am not in any way saying that the problems experienced by people who aren't citizens aren't problems. I get it, they live here, and if there's a crime, but this card does nothing to alleviate any other problems, except perhaps if the school districts lower the bar, and there were a couple that came, so there are at least a couple that are going to do it, if they lower the bar on what kind of ID they're requiring at the school. And if you're going to do that, why not just have them write their name on a piece of paper? Because what's the point at that point, if that's what you want to do? So I guess there is one small thing that might be practical. The rest of it, you might as well take the money that was spent on this over the summer, and take it outside and burn it, you'd probably get as much productive use out of it. The long list of things that this does not do, it's ridiculous. It covers like every possible walk of life. It's like it's the reverse of our tax policies. Every tax we can increase, we increase. And I guess to help subsidize programs like this, and as a citizen, that's frustrating. I'll stop now, but I appreciate the time, and you're indulging me. Thank you for the answers, I know you all tried hard. Thank you. Are there much, Councilman Waring? Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to get back to, we're focused on the ID portion, but could you speak a little bit more about the unified services portion of the card? I know right now, we keep calling it a glorified library card, but what is the timing? I know ultimately, we may want to wrap in parks and other departments into it, where we might see a cost savings, so could you just speak a little bit more to that?
Yes, Councilwoman Stark. We are launching this in February, as we said, as a library card. It will already have the barcode on the back, so that other city services can be added to it in the future. The, what we've talked about, we have an internal city team working on this. Parks Department has cards, the Gulf Area has cards, Human Services is another area. So we're looking at combining all of those cards into one easy-to-use city services card.
So what do you think the timetable is on that? I mean, is it going to roll out in a...
Councilwoman, in our discussions with SF Global, they have indicated two to three years, because it truly is a technology issue. Our departments that we've been working with have different technologies that operate their databases. And so it really is getting those departments together and talking through the technology requirements and how we might be able to implement that.
If we implement that, what kind of cost savings might we realize? Or have you really looked that far into the future yet, or you still need to do more research on that?
We still do need to do research in that area.
Any additional questions on that? Councilman, please.
Just a couple, just following the path of Councilman Waring. And this is more to the lady from the global asset entity, you're a financial services institution, is what you are. When we send these individuals over to you, will you be marketing to them your financial services?
The contract and the agreement is that this is an option A and option C. And that was, that is a secondary ID card, that is also a city services card. And so it will not be a bank card, so that discussion was not pursued.
No, I mean, will the company be marketing to those individuals we send over to you?
No, in cities where we are going to, where we're coming out as just an ID card, it depends on what the city also wants and what the stakeholders want, what they feel that is needed. In some of the cities where we're just coming out as an ID card, then one agreement is that in the second year, then they want to be able to have us also offer to those cardholders who are qualified and who opt to have them, because it's optional, to be able to have access to the financial services card. And again, that's in order to bank folks who are today, again, legal residents and US citizens who are outside of the banking system, and anyone who can, you know, who needs to have financial services.
Okay, to be more clear, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not being clear on it. To the individuals that you're going to be getting from the City of Phoenix, you will not be marketing to them?
No, we won't.
Okay, that's important. The other is, what type of identification do you need to be able to get this card?
I'm going to turn that over to the city staff, because they've elaborated the list. And again, the ID is determined, what documents are accepted, that's determined by the city and also the stakeholders.
And then I'm going to ask staff questions about what assurances are we going to have as a follow-up? Are we going to have that they do not market financial services to any of the individuals that they get from the City of Phoenix?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that could be something we could easily negotiate in the contract and ensure that it's in the contract as a prohibition.
Well, she just said that she agreed to it.
Well, that's easy, then. We just put it in the contract.
All right. And so I think for the council in the future, I'm not going to support this, but at the very least, we should be protecting those individuals that come through the system to make sure that they're, I mean, those fees, if they're correct, I mean, that's predatory lending. You do not want to have the City of Phoenix involved in a predatory lending situation. You just don't want to do that. Those fees are exorbitant, they're not paid, I mean, most people don't pay for those kinds of fees. So that's good to hear. You'll make sure that that's in the contract. The other is, what kind of identification do we need to get for someone to be able to get this card?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, so in that regard, we took the list that ADOT publishes of primary and secondary ID. Two IDs from that combined list will be required in order to obtain the city ID. And we added to that three additional IDs that could be used. One is a foreign passport, as Councilman Waring pointed out a minute ago. Secondly, a foreign government-issued, federal government, meaning the national government-issued voter ID card. And finally, just a federal or national government-issued identification card.
Oh, what was the third?
Voter identification card in a foreign country.
Okay. Why were those added?
I'm sorry?
Why?
Why were those added? Those were added because we consulted with the police department, and there's a specialist in the police department who told us, who's an identification fraud specialist, and he indicated those are the most reliable foreign identifications. They are also relied upon and utilized by certain other governments, including the local governments here in the United States that have issued IDs. They also rely on or allow those to be used to obtain a similar city ID in those other jurisdictions.
Is a copy of their passport, voter ID, is that all kept on file somewhere?
I'm not familiar with SF Global's practice of how they do intake, so I can't really answer that.
Is it?
The question?
Is a copy of all the information provided, a foreign passport, foreign identification, or any of the list of the ADOT information? Do you keep all that information?
The information is scanned for the purposes of being able to verify the documents. And those are kept in our secure servers for a period of years, and depending on the card program. So, yes.
What can be used, I mean, what can you use it for? Do you have security measures to make sure that you can only use it for certain things?
Yes. And again, all of these programs, security is a major issue. Again, we're, you know, doing this for cities, and we're doing it for the stakeholders and the individuals.
Not security from the outside, security from you.
So the security measures that are used, these are scanned documents. There is a team, this is not the intake workers that receive the documents, but there's a team that then review those documents, SF Global team. They all go through training on these documents. We also contract with a third party, a company, and this is their expertise, that does ID, they're looking at for ID theft, and also for other kinds of fraud. And so those are also run through this company called Idology.com, so you can look it up. When you do look it up, then you'll see that they have access to DMV records, they have records to passports, many, many millions of different kinds of records, and so it goes through that kind of exam.
I apologize, I must not be clear when I talk. I'm sorry. It's my fault, I'm sure. I'm asking, what controls do you have to make sure, what does your company use that information with? What kind of controls do you have with the type of information that's provided to you by these individuals?
Again, we use this information in order to verify that they are who they say they are in order to issue the card.
And do you have any control measures that it cannot be used for anything else?
Absolutely.
Like what?
The information, the persons handling it, like I said, everyone goes through a background check, number one, that, you know, is involved in handling any of this information. Then any of the documentation, again, this is a secure, cloud-based Amazon, which is, which control, which keeps the documents for the US government. We use the same kind of security measures and the same kind of, you know, storage.
I know, I'm not being clear, I'm sorry, it's my fault again.
Councilman...
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman, I was going to try to answer the question.
I'm sorry, I know, but she's the company. You did that to Jim, and I don't think that's polite.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
So from my end of it, again, I'm asking a very specific question. What can that information be used for from your company? What do you, can you use it for anything? What type of controls do you have over the information that individuals give you?
The whole purpose of collecting that information is in order to issue the ID card.
I understand that.
And that is what the information is used for.
It cannot be used for anything else?
It is not...
You're in testimony here.
It is not used for anything else.
Okay, so you store it, you verify it? I'll get into the verification in a second.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, and I'm, you know, if what you're saying is correct, that's all good stuff, because it's about protecting the individual that comes to you too. The City of Phoenix is basically entering into a partnership with you.
Yes.
And for whatever reason, if they do get involved into what I would consider to be predatory type of lending, using people's data and information provided to you in privacy, and then you use it for something else, because you're a financial institution, you're supposed to be making money, I have no problem with that, I'm okay with capitalism. But I think the public needs to know, and everyone needs to know exactly what it is. So what I'm hearing is, someone hands you a document, and this is good, that you store it, you only use it, only use it, for verification purposes only, correct? You don't use it for any other marketing, nothing else? You don't use it for any other marketing, nothing else within this side of the company? You don't collect data on those individuals, do you?
In cities like the City of Phoenix, where we have a contract to issue an ID-only card and find, and city services, that information is only used for that purpose, is to issue the ID card. There are other municipalities who have sought to have a financial services feature to the card. In those cases, then that information, for those cardholders who opt to have financial services, then that information is used in order to issue them also a financial services card. In the case of Phoenix, because it's an ID-only card with city services, it would only be used for ID purposes.
Okay, so I wanna make sure staff understands that. When you write up the contract, that there is a storage provision in that agreement to that it can only be used for those certain things. All right, now let me go into the next question. And it deals with what, you know, what can this card be used for in and itself, just by itself? What's the, like, if I only had this card by myself, what could it be used for by itself? Without having to provide a secondary identification? Like, I have a driver's license, I can use it for quite a bit of few things.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, so if you have this card, the things that you could use it for by itself are as follows. Number one, there's a state statute that says everyone driving car must have ID. If the person driving a car did not have ID, did not have, it's a driver's license, let's say, and he had this card and this card only in his wallet, he pulled it out, it has the biometrics required by that statute to satisfy the statutory obligation to have ID when you're driving a car. So it could be used for that.
But not as a driver's license?
Correct.
Just to provide identification as to who you are?
Correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct. That's number one. Number two, I think one of you already mentioned, maybe it was Councilman Waring, that some school districts have said and testified in the past that they would consider it as ID for a parent to come and check his child out of school or to come and speak with a teacher when ID was required to enter into the campus of the individual school. That's not, not all school districts may choose to do that, but some school districts would choose to do that. That's a possible use by itself. And besides that, the other, let's see, and then the, the obvious use of the card that I think Councilwoman Stark alluded to, and that is, at some point, it, it can be used to obtain city services when it's consolidated. And it might be, be usable among the city departments for identification when that might be necessary.
Yeah, so, yeah, and that's a good point. When you're talking about, what can it be used today? Maybe I should've been more clear, Brad, that was my, I did not add the word "today." But what can it be used for today?
Today, it can be used for the identification that was required by statute that every person must have who's driving a car. Beyond that, we don't have any certified, a school district saying their governing board will accept it. They would presumably have to approve at either the governing board level or at the, at least at the principal level. I don't have...
We can, we can use it as a library card, though, for sure, today.
You can use it as a library card. That's, those are the uses today that I'm aware of that it could be used for.
Again, Mayor, you know, and I'm not gonna support it. And my questioning was more toward, direction towards staff because the concerns I have is, when you're dealing with financial institutions, again, I'm fine with it. I'm, I'm totally good with people trying to make money. I don't have an issue with that. But I do have an issue when the City of Phoenix does get involved in a situation where individuals now are paying these exorbitant fees that people like me would not pay. I wouldn't pay it. I, I just wouldn't do it. And that was one of the biggest debate when it came down to the predatory lending issues at the state legislature because of the high fees and, and the charge that it did to the people that were basically not able to understand what was going on. And just a short history, I mean, I, I grew up very poor. My first language was Italian. I saw things happen with my family that I think that a lot of people see happening with their families today because they get taken advantage of from people that are like themselves. And I saw that happen with my family, but it just happens because you trust those individuals when you really shouldn't be trusting them. And so whatever it is that the City of Phoenix does, the three of you are basically personally responsible to make sure that everybody here in this room that cannot defend themselves, you're gonna be putting that in this contract that protects them. That's it. And that's as simple it is for me. I think it's a waste of time. I think the hundreds of hours is a cost to taxpayers. At the end of the day, it's another feel-good provision that the City of Phoenix has been on this rant about in the last two or three years, literally about doing all this feel-good stuff that means nothing. I know people want it to mean something, but at the end of the day, it turns out to be nothing more than a library card. You know, if you wanted it more, you should've expected more and demanded more, but you didn't get it. So those individuals that are here today pushing for this, you didn't get what you think you're getting today. You're getting something that makes you feel good. And at the end of the day, could actually be taken advantage of you if we don't write this contract correctly, that you literally can be taken advantage of. And the City of Phoenix would've been complicit in that. So the questioning that I've got is more along the lines of making sure that whatever they put in the agreement with this other entity, who I don't know, you may be a great company and may not, I, you know, I'm assuming you're a good company, you know? But there are individuals in our community that could easily be taken advantage of. The fees that Mr. Waring talked about are exorbitant. And it's outrageous. And you should not be accepting things like that. Thanks, Mayor, I'm done.
Thank you very much. Ms. Macron, you had, you had attempted to respond to a question that Councilman DeCiccio was asking earlier and weren't provided opportunity. Did you have, did you wanna provide the information to the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Councilman DeCiccio, it's exactly the conversations we've been having as staff as we begin to write to the contract language. The information that is collected, that SF Global collects from the individuals, it will be in the contract that that information cannot be used for anything else.
I think very much, and I think there was a provision when we voted to move forward with this early summer relative to predatory lending or ban on predatory lending. I think that was already built into the requirement that Councilman...
Mayor, that's correct. I wanted to clarify that the action as proposed in the motion itself does not allow any lending or banking to be attached to this card, which means there's no fees or anything like that. If that were to change, it would have to be done by a vote of the council. But as it stands here, that is not on the table.
I think you're right. Any additional comments or questions? Councilman Pastore, please.
I'd like to thank my colleagues for all the great comments and inquiries because those were the same questions that I had and others on this dais has had. And so we have been able to work these items out as we have been working on it for like a year and a half, at least for me. And so, as anybody knows in states, and Councilman Nowkowski and also has been a, a great supporter of this, but when we've been working on it, these were the key issues that we were targeting or looking at to making sure that there wasn't any type of predatory lending, that their information was safe and secure, and that we were able to make sure that it was a secondary ID. The second item is, I don't think any of us in this world can ever guaranteed, guarantee that our ID is secure any longer. Due to many different, me personally, items that have happened to me, where my ID or my information is compromised, that's going to be a challenge as we move forward. For many of us, we were very lucky that our, we were very lucky in the sense that our information wasn't compromised just recently as when somebody was trying to hack the Arizona State Secretaries of our voting record and our information. So there's nothing guaranteed in life with our information at this moment. And we see it also with many different areas and our credit card. As they were talking, as earlier, we were talking about, are you going to market to those that are applying for this ID? That was never a, that was never placed on the table.
That's correct, Councilwoman.
That was never part of the discussion and would not be part of the discussion. But just like anything, and I'll use my Macy's card. I get a Macy's card, I have it for a while, and then all of a sudden, they shift to, well, would you like an American Express Macy's? Or would you like a Visa? So that's kind of the way we were looking at, in the sense of not going there. I just feel like, in some people's mind, it may not be, it may be nothing to them. But for some people, it's security and it's giving them identity for them. And so an ID may be nothing to somebody, but it means something to someone else. And so in our community, this means something. And it means that they belong to our community and to our city. And so that's why all of us who sit here, who have been here longer than I, have been advocates for this. And so I think this is a good day for our community.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any additional comments? Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Is there any other city in the United States? We talked about Ontario. Any other city in the United States that accepts a foreign passport and gives out an ID? Because we've got Oakland, Richmond, a few other cities use SF Global.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I don't have the answer to that. My belief is, is that at least a couple of the other cities that have issued Muni IDs have in fact allowed foreign passports. But it's possible that Tony may have the data on the title.
It's a little concerning to me that that's not, that that's not something anybody thought to ask since we're now gonna be doing it today. That, that's just a little bit surprising. If you have this ID, you could still be deported. This doesn't prevent that in any way, shape, or form, right?
You're absolutely right, Councilman.
So we're gonna be giving a City of Phoenix ID to folks who are deportable. I guess taking their ID back to whatever their country of origin is, wherever they are sent. That's also seems odd to me. Is there any criminal checks? All you gotta do is show up with your water bill and we're giving you an ID?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, yes, there is a, there is a criminal sanction in the ordinance.
No, no, I mean, are we checking backgrounds of, let me put this a different way. So there have been some tragedies where people who aren't citizens were deported, came back, you know, either weren't prosecuted or there are different details, I think, in several of these, have come back and then committed heinous crimes. How are you guys gonna feel? How is the council, if they vote for this, gonna feel when one of those people has a Phoenix ID in their pocket? So I'm just wondering, is there any kind of screening mechanism? I don't remember hearing anything about one.
So, Councilman Waring, there isn't a background check per se done. However, the consultant, as I understand, the contractor in this case, SF Global, does have a database called Ideology that they intend to consult when they get an application. So that, that database, we actually asked the police department to kind of check into that. And there may be data in there that would include criminal information. But it's not a database like the secure databases that the police have access to. And the point you make is, is that not all people who haven't committed, people who haven't committed crimes won't be in those databases in any event.
So, I guess, I'm glad I asked this question because, so SF Global is gonna decide whether they distribute the ID with the City of Phoenix logo on it, calling itself the Phoenix Municipal ID Card? They get to decide who gets a card and who doesn't? We don't, as a city?
Well, I think we establish the criteria and by contract, they follow that. They're a contractor to us. Based under this criteria that are going to be established in the contract, they will issue ID.
And again, I, Mayor, I guess I would have an issue with that too. We are farming out to a company that we've only made contact with, it sounds like the summer or the spring at the best, basic core government functions. Let me ask this, and I will say this because I know it'll be controversial, so I'll just say it now. I am no way implying that everybody who asks for this card, or any individual asks for this card, is a terrorist or anything else. The terrorists from 9/11, they would've been here 90 days, I think, or at least in Arizona. But let's pretend they were in Phoenix for 90 days. I think they took some pilot training here. I think that's been firmly established. So they theoretically could've gotten this card because they would've had passports? And that sounds like a good idea to you guys?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, in the hypothetical that you pose, let me correct a mistake that I made earlier. It's not a 90-day residency requirement. It's a residency requirement that can be established by the traditional sort of federal residency requirement, things like you buy a house, you sign a lease, that kind of thing. And so those number of days aren't necessarily specified if you own property. However, if you don't own property, you can actually be a resident if you're a homeless person in a homeless shelter for a much smaller amount of time under the proposed ordinance. And otherwise, sort of the general rule is, if you don't own property and you're not in a homeless shelter, but you bring in a water bill within the last 30 days, you could qualify for residency. But under those criteria, then yes, it is theoretically possible in that dramatic example that you just posed, that somebody who was here for the requisite amount of time or had a lease or owned a piece of property or paid a water bill could then come and get a Phoenix municipal ID card with a foreign passport.
So, it may be a dramatic hypothetical, but it's also a possible hypothetical. Some would say, well, that's an extreme example. Okay, but that was an extreme crazy act. And I guess I, being on the Phoenix City Council, if, if something horrendous happened and they found one of these IDs in the pocket of the perpetrator, I don't know what the heck I would tell people. I don't know what I would tell citizens in my district about, yep, we've been really responsible. We have really, we're, we're really on top of things. I think I'd feel really culpable and really horrific, horrendous, wherever you wanna apply. So, again, I, I respectfully disagree with the premise that all these things have been thought out, the fact that we don't know if other US cities are using passports or not for this. That doesn't seem like a lot of due diligence was done on this. I'm not criticizing you guys, I'm just saying, it seems like a few more weeks of study might, might be in order. We are not Ontario, Canada. I don't know how it's running there, but that was the only example that they could come up with. I think if you went and lived for 90 days or lived in a homeless shelter in Paris for a few days and then told the Paris government, I'm expecting to get an ID and a lot of government services, I'm not sure that they would take you seriously. I'm pretty sure they would not say, yep, yep, our city council passed out a few years ago. I think that's a great idea. Sign us up. I don't think that's the way that would go pretty much any place. So I understand, as Councilman DeCiccio mentioned, that people think this is a good idea. And I think we do a lot of things around here to be fashionable and, and sound enlightened. But this could really make us look foolish. And I just think the answers that we've got today are pretty vague. Councilman DeCiccio asks about what this could be used for today. In a few years, maybe it'll be a city services card. But I think, Tony, you predicted that would be like three years out. Right now, it's a library card. We already have library cards. You can get a library card, it's free. So for those of you who are tweeting me that I want my expensive library card, fantastic. But I gotta tell you, that's not a good reason to be doing this. You talked about it, like, it kind of came across, so I want everybody to be clear. It's not a driver's license. If you are driving without license, registration, and proof of insurance, they will impound your car. Know how I know? I did the bill at the state legislature, it was my bill, that said that. Because you know what? If you get hit by someone with no license, registration, and proof of insurance, that's real bad for you. And I know people it happened to. So, because of course, we have no idea who you are and you don't have any insurance. So this ID is not gonna get you out of that problem. That doesn't help you in any way, which is my point. So that was really kind of, I thought, a little bit of a spurious example. You're still in trouble. The only thing it's good for, as I think you highlighted, the second thing was the school districts.
Mayor and Councilman Waring, if I may, you had a question about the, the research that we did, foreign passports? The cities that do accept foreign passports for their city ID? San Francisco, Oakland, Richmond, a city in Michigan, and also New York City, so...
I did ask this yesterday and the only example was Ontario. So this is new information to me just now. We've been sitting here talking about this for a while. Again, highlighting that this isn't the smoothest-running ship in the fleet.
Mayor, I just also wanted to add to that. It's important to note the purpose of this is to establish someone's identification as a resident. It is not a guarantee of future behavior or anything of that nature. So just to make that clear.
Councilman Valzweil, excuse me?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mrs. Zirkar, I appreciate you, that, that last point you just made. You know, the majority of the people in our state, and by the way, I'm a, I'm a native. Raised my kids here. I believe the high majority, the very high majority are really good people. And the people who are caught doing things that they shouldn't be doing, many of them have an Arizona State-issued driver's license. So should we do background checks before we give people driver's license? Anyone else who's on the list for the secondary ID, should they be doing background checks before they give someone that secondary ID to prevent that organization from looking foolish? I, I think we're, I think we are, I think this is a stretch to try to make it something that it's not. Frankly, I think... Frankly, I think all of the reservations, many of the reservations that have been spoken and talked about over the months have been resolved here. This is not the New York ID. Still, we're still hearing about the New York ID, the $12 million expenditure that the taxpayers are having, this is, this is not New York, it's the City of Phoenix, we found a way to do it in a cost-neutral fashion, $30 or less, it sounds like, people are going to be able to get an ID. The vision behind this, let's not lose the vision, it is a city service card. Ms. Macron, how many different cards do we have here at the City of Phoenix? Library cards and otherwise? So if I wanted every card possible with the City of Phoenix, as someone who is, who is a native and raises family here, how many cards would I have in my wallet?
Councilman Valenzuela, it's about a dozen.
Okay, so about a dozen. So it's 2016, we're moving towards, you know, the future, and we should be consolidating, and we should be a little more innovative. That's part of the future. We're starting with the library card, as I understand it, the software is not available to allow us to consolidate just yet. But at some point, we will get there, and this gives us a platform to move us in the right direction. So there is a use for it. A question went to our Assistant Chief, who is one of the most respected law enforcement officers in our state, asking what purpose this would serve with the police department. The chief replied with, this gives us a starting point. Sounded to me like you were second guessed. I will tell you, chief, you're the subject matter expert, I believe you, it is a starting point. I am a first responder myself, and I've been on calls, many calls, where people have been unresponsive, with no identification. We're trying to figure out who this person is and how we can get them help, it's a struggle. And when we can figure out who they are, there's something on them with their biometrics, their photo, the rest of their biometrics, it gives us an idea of who this person might be. You know what? Does that, can we confirm who that person is? Well, I don't know, we probably can't do that without a fingerprint, even if that person had an Arizona State-issued driver's license, frankly. But it gives us a starting point, and that could be the difference between life and death, frankly. I'm sure our police officers, you know, it gives them a starting point, and frankly, if I were a police officer, it'd make me feel better if I had a starting point, if I were dealing with someone who maybe, in this case, may not be doing what they're supposed to be doing, with no ID, I have no clue in who this person is. But now I have something with their name on it, something with their biometrics, biometric information on it, even their signature, it gives me an idea of who this person might be. I think this does serve a purpose in public safety. That alone, that alone makes me supportive of this topic. The idea that we are moving toward consolidating our city services, our cards, I think that's another reason for this. And, you know, the cost-neutral, I mean, I was nervous, frankly, I was, I was really concerned to try to figure out if this is something the city was going to be able to do through a public-private partnership, that would make it cost-neutral. And Dr. Kruze-Katash, thank you so much for stepping up, and thank you for being here today to help us with this cost-neutral municipal service card. The ID, which I'm holding in my hand, and I'm sure on the, we did have a slide up to kind of show what this would look like, does have a photo on it, in fact, can we go back to it, please? States in plain English, this card is not an official license, it is a secondary ID. This card does not satisfy requirements for state-issued ID. This card is not a City of Phoenix employee ID. It's not a driver's license, if someone is driving without a driver's license, I'm sure they're going to be cited for that. That's not what we're talking about here today. I think this moves us in the right direction, I was supportive from the very beginning, the things that have, the work that has been done by the committee that was formed, and certainly city staff, and of course, our partner. I think it's, I think it's pretty amazing, and I look forward to supporting this, hopefully it'll pass, and it'll help us move forward as well.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I think this is a great day and a great moment for us to move forward in making Phoenix a more inclusive city, so I, too, look forward to supporting this item. I cannot think of anything else that has been brought to us from the community with years and years of work from the community. This really was a community-led initiative, where the research was done by volunteers, by nonprofits, by faith groups, who have brought this forward, and with an unusual amount of support from school boards. We've had multiple school boards from my district, several elementary school districts. The main high school district has said this is something they'd really like to see, and that they feel it would produce better educational outcomes, that it would help parents become more active in their students' schools and lives, to build better relationships with teachers, to allow those parents to be engaged in classroom activities. Regularly, we hear from our constituents on the Phoenix City Council, they want us to do more, to invest in education, and we are not the main body that works on education, but when we have a great opportunity, and we hear from school board after school board that this is important, I think it's valuable that we listen. Stanford Prescott, who is one of the school board members who represents the same, many of the same individuals who I represent, is here today and has been here throughout the process, and one of many of the elected officials in this community who have said, this is an important thing to do. We've also heard regularly that access to libraries is important. You know, we've been talking today about foreign nationals, and we have to remember, they're individual people, they have children, they have Phoenix addresses in our community, real people with real stories, real lives who we can make better. And it's a wonderful opportunity that we can partner with our residents and make their life a little bit better. So we have to talk realistically about what the outcomes are as a result of this card. I can honestly say, I don't expect people to use it for ill. I expect people to use it to access city services like the library, to get discounts for being actively engaged in Phoenix at places like restaurants, small businesses, locally-owned businesses. It will be an opportunity to build a stronger Phoenix, and so I want to thank the people from the community, the leaders who have brought it forward to us. I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Councilman Nowakowski?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to thank the individuals that, for the last two to three years, they've been coming to meetings after meetings, testimonies after testimonies, crying, telling us their stories, how people are afraid to walk our streets, how people are afraid to pick up the phone when the crime's being done in their own homes, because they don't have an ID. Testimonies of individuals from all different walks of life, giving those testimonies to us over and over and over, and you never gave up. You never gave up. You continue, and you continue. And I just really want to thank you for all your hard efforts, especially those nonprofit organizations that really never gave up and did all the research and all that heavy lifting that we should have done as elected officials. And shame on us that we didn't work hard enough or fast enough on it, too. I just really want to thank our staff also for taking all that time to sit down with the community, because I believe that once you sit people around a table, and you have a conversation, you find that common ground, and that's exactly what we found here, is that common ground. At the same time, it's a card that's going to be used for all kinds of different services that the city provides. We talked about 12 different cards that we have as a City of Phoenix. I went to the landfill just the other day, I had to pay $30 because I forgot my water bill. It's simple things like that that you don't even think of, because you've, I haven't been to the landfill for the last eight years, and I forgot. But if I would have had a Phoenix ID card, that would have proved that I was a resident here, and that could have probably let me into the landfill with no cost. I believe technology's changing, and it's changing quick. And little by little, we're going to have other services. The library system is going to cost us about $5 million just to upgrade our library cards. So instead of doing that, we decided to go this route. Pretty soon, we're going to have our Phoenix Rec Center cards, our senior cards, they're all going to have to be updated, those systems. And once we're starting to update those systems, we should be using this card. We should be using this innovative way of thinking. And I just really want to thank you all for being innovators, I really want to thank you all for putting in the time and listening to the individuals that we serve out there in the community. I know that not all the residents of the City of Phoenix is going to take advantage of this card, but there's a large need for a card, and those individuals that want it, they'll have the opportunity to purchase it and to use it. So once again, I just really want to thank you for finding that partner out there in the community. And in the future, I really like to see this come back so that we can evaluate it in a year from now, and maybe there's some other stuff that we can add to it. Maybe there's some improvements that we can do. And I know we have, we voted for a five-year contract, but I think there's improvements that we can do as things go. I believe we've been talking and talking and talking, unless there's something very, very crucial, I like to call the question on it, I'm not sure...
I wanted to respond to a point you made, actually.
All right, go for it.
Thank you. So, talked about going to the landfill and not needing your water bill. Is this card used for that now, or yes or no? All right, with the... The only thing we were told was, this was a library card.
It could in the future, I was...
Okay, so, but right now, if you've got 12 cards, you're just adding a 13th card to the pile. The difference between secondary ID and primary ID, because I think somehow that's gotten lost here, the primary ID, we call it the primary ID because you actually, not 100%, and it doesn't mean those people haven't committed crimes and so forth, but right now, a primary ID, we're pretty sure, that's why banks take it, you can rent places with it, you can go places with it, you can get a passport with it, because we're pretty sure we know who you are. Why is a secondary ID called a secondary ID? Because we're not as sure, not even close. That's why there's this very clear distinction between the primary and the secondary. All these services, Councilman Nowakowski, and I have a lot of respect for Councilman Nowakowski, that's great that it could be done in the future. Right now, this is nothing but another library card. So, thank you.
Mayor, just before we call the question on this, I like to mention that I work for a nonprofit organization that issues a membership card. That membership card is a secondary ID, and there's a lot of credit unions, there's a lot of different organizations out there that accepts our ID card as a secondary ID. So just because today, we don't know that there's other organizations, or if there might be a credit union, that takes this as a second ID card for their institution, for their organization, I mean, you never know. I mean, in the future, we might have banks that are going to accept it as a secondary ID card. There might be other organizations out there that are going to say, hey, if you want to be a member of a YMCA or so, we accept this as a secondary ID card. We don't know, but once we have it in place, and once we get the credibility on it, I believe that there's going to be institutions and organizations out there that are going to accept this card beyond the City of Phoenix. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
All right, the question's been called. We'll take a vote on that, I guess.
Requires a second.
All right, a second to call the question? All right, there may not be any other comments, anyway. All right, so with that, I want to make sure that the record rate reflects that Vincent Salmo submitted a card, we don't have time for additional comments, but he's opposed the measure based upon the fact that this will not be revenue-neutral, so I want to make sure his opposition was registered for the record. Okay, so we have a motion in favor of the proposal, we have a second, roll call.
We're on the question, previous question.
No, I think there was no additional comment, so there was no need to call for the question, we're just voting.
All right.
Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yeah, so the item passes on a 5-4 vote of the city council. There be no, there be no further business for the city council, I believe? Is one of the, oh, wait, is it 85? Do we have a motion on 85? Okay, read the title, 85.
Item 85, ordinance number G6198, and ordinance amending Phoenix City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, to add new Article 42, related to the city services card, secondary municipal identification card.
Okay, we have, that's the reading, do we have a motion on 85?
Move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Well, we had a lot of testimony that covered that as well. Any comments from this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
It's 85.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yeah, so that item passes 5-4. So now we're, have no other business for the city council. Our meeting is adjourned.